You not only need a bag boy, you need someone to drink your greens from you.
We're gonna go ahead and get started. We have two public hearings we need to address right off the bat. First public hearing is amendment to section 405.050, definition interpretation. Jac, you want to address those?
Yes, sir. Good evening, Mayor and Board. First one we have is amendment to section 405.050, definitions and interpretation. I first asked to make part of the public hearing record, the municipal code by reference, my planning and zoning report, and the public notices. This is a proposed amendment to section 405.050, definitions and interpretation. During the February 6th, 2014 Planning and Zoning Commission's meeting, discussion regarding the proposed text amendment request to appendix A, ADM-66 was tabled, and the Planning and Zoning Commission requested adding a definition for transitional living to the city's municipal code. The proposed new definition to be added is transitional living facility, residential structure specifically excluding substance abuse, counseling, and treatment where for compensation and prearrangement for definite periods of time, professional support, education, lodging, transportation, meals, supervision, and training, or a combination of any of the items listed above are provided to create a stable living environment with the primary purpose of assisting young adults in transitioning to independent living. These facilities are for individuals 20 years of age or less excluding staff, and the motion for approval passed nine to zero with one abstention at the March 6th, 2014 Planning and Zoning Commission meeting.
Is there anyone in the audience that'd like to address the board regarding this public hearing? If so, come forward to the podium and state your name.
Hi, I'm Kathy Pritchett, and I'm the owner of Step Up Transitional Living Program. I am the one that requested the amendment, and I'm not sure how much detail you want me to go into or how this works, but basically, the first thing I want to do is apologize to the board. This program was actually started two years ago without the knowledge of the fact that it had to be, that the zoning didn't fit what we started. My husband and I have been foster parents in Warren County for the last 10 years, and we had kids anywhere from birth, bringing them home to the hospital up to teenagers, 20-year-olds. And so, we started this program in an effort to be able to take in more kids and work with teenagers specifically. So it didn't really cross my mind that zoning didn't fit because I just thought of it as foster kids. It has grown. We do take, we have taken a couple young people that are not in foster care, but basically it's for foster kids and it's funded by foster kids. And just here to request the zoning be approved so we can continue.
Okay, thank you. Any questions for Mrs. Pritchett?
You own the house?
No, we rent it. It's a villa. It's a three-unit villa. We rent it from Demean Construction.
So you just rent one of the units?
We rent all, I rent all three under the business name. And my husband and I live in one of the units, and then we have girls in a unit and boys in the other unit.
So you're doing foster care work as a business?
Yes, in a sense. They are foster kids, but it's an actual transitional living program, so it's not, it's a, there's a daily rate that we're contracted with a company, an organization called Missouri Alliance, who is a contractor to children's division. And so, they are mostly foster youth, yes. But it's not, it's not like having them in your home. They're in transitional living, so they live in the units without staff. But I do have a business. I have business insurance. I have staff that I hire, so it is run as a business.
Any other questions for the board? Thank you. Anyone else like to speak on behalf of this amendment? Not hearing from anyone, I'm gonna close that public hearing, and I'll open public hearing amendment to appendix A. Jac, you want to address that?
Yes, sir. Once again, I'd like to ask to be part of the public hearing record, the municipal code by reference, my planning and zoning report, and the public hearing notices. This is a proposed amendment to appendix A, ADM-66, and this basically is to allow adding the section transitional living to appendix A to be used as a conditional use in the R3 zoning district. Motion for approval passed nine to zero with one abstention at the March 6th, 2014 Planning and Zoning Commission meeting.
Okay. Anyone in the audience who want to address the amendments? I mean, you're probably gonna tell us the same thing.
I'm just gonna stand up. I think we'll begin a lot.
I think we're fine on it. I think we pretty well have the gist of it. Believe it or not, these people do watch the tapes of the planning and zoning meetings, and they do read the minutes, so they probably are more up to date than you think. Not hearing from anyone from the public, I'm gonna go ahead and close the public hearing section. At this time, I want to open the Board of Alderman meeting for the City of Warrenton on March 18th, 2014. If everyone would stand and fix your flag, Alderman Cornell will lead us in the pledge.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
On the agenda, the first item under three is the approval of minutes. 3A is Ways and Means Committee Meeting Minutes from March 4th, 2014.
I'll make a motion to approve the Ways and Means Committee Meeting from March 4th, 2014.
Second.
Motion by Alderman Flake, seconded by Alderman Kestrelly to approve the Ways and Means Committee Meeting Minutes from March 4th, 2014. Any discussion or concerns? Roll call, please.
Alderman Dryer?
Yes.
Alderman Flake?
Yes.
Alderman Cornell?
Yes.
Aldo Person Kestrelly?
Yes.
Alderman Ock?
Yes.
Alderman Clark?
Yes.
Motion carried six to zero. Item 3B, regular board meeting minutes from March 4th, 2014.
Make a motion to be approve the regular board meeting minutes from March 4th, 2014.
Second.
Motion by Alderman Kestrelly, seconded by Alderman Clark to approve the regular board meeting minutes from March 4th, 2014. Any concerns?
Yeah, I'm trying to find out the minutes. It said that I voted against the $10,000 for the fireworks because I'd rather spend the money on the lamp poles Christmas time, which I do agree with, but I think the actual reason I didn't vote for it was I thought that the revenues that are brought to the city doesn't justify the expense.
Did you find it in the minutes?
Yeah, yeah, it's on page 10. Alderman Ock would rather fund the holiday bows and the fireworks, which is true, but I real, my real intent, or what I'd said in the meeting, was that I didn't think the $10,000 expenditure justified any potential revenue the city would bring in.
You want to correct it?
Yes.
Pardon me?
Yes.
Okay. Any other concerns with the minutes? Entertainer motion with the regular board meeting minutes from March 4th, 2014 with the corrections on Alderman Ock's vote.
So moved.
Second.
Motion by Alderman Kestrelly, seconded by Alderman Ock. All, our roll call, please.
Alderman Flake?
Yes.
Alderman Cornell?
Yes.
Aldo Person Kestrelly?
Yes.
Alderman Ock?
Yes.
Alderman Clark?
Yes.
Alderman Dryer?
Yes.
Motion carried six to zero. Let me get my machine back here. What am I doing wrong here? Where am I doing my sign? There we go. All right, I'm moving on to item four, hearing from the public, and this is the opportunity we give the public to address the board on any concerns you might have. We ask you to come forward to the podium, give us your name and nature of your business, and we allow you for five minutes to address the board. So if anybody would like to address the board, please do so at this time. Nobody wants to talk to us. Okay. We're gonna move on, and we're gonna extend that same courtesy to the Board of Aldermen, and we'll start down on Alderman Clark's end. Anything you want to say to the public?
Not tonight.
Not tonight. Alderman Ock?
Pass.
Alderman Kestrelly?
I'm going to pass as well.
You guys are quiet.
Pass.
Alderman Flake?
Yes.
Alderman Dryer?
Pass.
Okay, well, we're gonna, we're gonna move on through this.
Wasn't a whole lot happening in the last couple of days.
The problem is, it's the mayor's turn. He gets the same courtesy. I have a few things I want to mention. The first thing I want to do is present an award, and I'll read this before I come down front. This is a Missouri Arbor Award of Excellence, and this is presented to Brad Boosie Cruz on March 10th, 2014. Kind of early, or late, I guess, not early, for improving Missouri communities through stewardship of our community's forest. Beautiful picture. Brad, if you'd come forward, I'll give this to you, even though I'm not gonna get, hang this in my office. Actually, what I was told, you are the only one in the state of Missouri that got this award.
Individual, yes.
Only one individual.
That's wonderful.
Congratulations.
Thank you, Brad.
You gotta stand there. I think he was taking a picture. I think the chief was taking a picture.
Oh. Get him on.
Go back.
Go back.
Sure, you gotta stand up.
Oh, I gotta, you want me to come around there?
Yeah. Put that picture right over my head.
Fred and I and the mayor plant the trees.
Well, then Fred, you and the mayor can picture.
This is like a photobum opportunity.
That's right. Congratulations.
It's very nice.
They're watching.
Seems like I've been attending a lot of meetings here lately. Wanted to talk about just a couple of them. First of all, I do want to remind the board that we have a meeting on the 25th of March in regards to our planning and strategic planning with our department heads. Their opportunity to present to us how they're gonna go about meeting our planning strategy. So don't forget that. Mark that on your calendar. The other thing I want to mention, I have a meeting for this Thursday that I was unable to keep, commit, or keep my commitment to the Chamber of Commerce. They're having a meeting for young businesspeople within the county, and their strategy was to meet with the city government, find out what city government's all about. Then they wanted to meet with the county government, see what that's all about. The third thing, they were, they were gonna meet with the judicial system over in the courthouse after that. I committed to that meeting, but then I realized I had a conflict. I want to thank Terry Thorne. She kind of stepped up and said, "I'll cover for you at that meeting." So just to say thank you, I appreciate you doing that. One of our strategies when we were doing our planning was to have various meetings throughout the county and with the neighboring municipalities and so forth. So we've been doing a mayor's, or hosting a mayor's luncheon once a quarter, and usually at that luncheon will be probably the mayor from New Florence, the mayor from Hawk Point, mayor from Truesdale. Sometime, well, the mayor from Wright City has a real job, so he doesn't make it very often, but he'll send one of the Aldermen or the economic developer represent them. The administrator from the Village of Endbrook's usually there. The city clerk from Forest Hills usually there. But anyway, it's an interesting meeting. We usually try to have a topic or a program. Last week, we had our meeting, and we had invited Representative Bart Corman to be our guest speaker and program for the day. At the last moment, he got tied up in Jefferson City on a, on some sort of a budget meeting, couldn't make it. So anyway, we get together, it's more of a social thing, but we do talk about what individual cities have going on, and most of the time, we all have the same issue. But anytime any Alderman want to attend one of those meetings, you're free to come along. I think Terry's attended at least one of them. You're always welcome. I enjoy those, so. The other thing I wanted to share with the board, I did meet with the postmaster here about a week ago, and that was in regards to the parking lot next door to the post office. I don't know if most of you remember, we, when we tore that home down and greveled that parking lot, we kind of not had a plan for it right away, and so we allowed the post office to use it with the hopes that maybe we would blacktop it, stripe it, and maybe get in or into a lease with the post office. So the post office continues to tell us they don't have a lot of money to spare, but I did meet with the postmaster, and she was gonna take it back to her higher-ups and see if they would be interested in leasing it from the city. Until such time, we're just being a good neighbor and letting them park on our lot, until such time we find a concrete use for it. So I want to share that with you. The only, the other meeting I went to was today, and the Missouri Department of Transportation kind of instigated the meeting. I know Chief Howdyshell was there, and Lieutenant Ellard was there. And this was in regard to our ice storm a couple weeks ago, came in on a Saturday night and shut the interstate down. I thought it was a very good meeting. The purpose of the meeting was to kind of share all the problems everybody had and see what we could do better in the future if this happened again. The 911 staff was there, the fire department and staff from Wright City and Warrenton were there, the ambulance staff was there, Missouri Highway Patrol was there, Greg and Lieutenant Ellard was there, even the weathermen were there, the people that do the weather forecasting. We had two individuals show up and show, share their expertise with us. County Commissioners was there, Missouri Department of Transportation road crews were there, the MoDOT staff and the heat engineer was there, the Skyline wrecker service staff was there, and the county emergency management director was there. So we had a room full of expertise. They shared their problems of what went on on the interstate that night. One of the things I remember from the highway patrol gentleman there, he said, "Usually in these situations, we have too many chiefs and not enough Indians to address all the problems." And he said this was a situation where we didn't have enough chiefs or enough Indians to address all the problems. And the problem was, even though we had enough wreckers and emergency vehicles, we couldn't get them to where they needed to be. The highway was so slick and dangerous, the one trooper said he parked his car along the shoulder, and it was so slick, he didn't want to, he didn't trust driving it, and he walked to the accident. When he got back, the car had slid off the road on its own and slid down the grassy area between the highway. So that gave you some idea of what was going on. I think you can't predict what Mother Nature's gonna dump on you, and I think everybody put forth their best effort. I think one of the things that I see coming out of this, and I'll ask Chief about what he thought about it later, but I think what they, they came to realize, they needed a command center to funnel all this information through one center, and somebody to be in charge over everybody and kind of keep them informed what's going on, what the ambulance people are doing, and what the fire department's doing, and I'm thinking that might come out of all this. They are gonna meet again with the different heads, and, but I thought it was a good start to share what kind of problems they had. You know, the wrecker people, they had wreckers there, and they couldn't get them on the interstate because they couldn't even get them down the ramps. It was so slippery, the wrecker would slide off the, off the ramp, and so it's a dangerous situation. But, you know, all in all, I thought they did pretty good. I don't know. Chief, you have a take on any of that?
You know, it was a good meeting. There were a lot of good things discussed, and like you said, probably the biggest thing that came out of it is it wasn't instant command set up. A lot of the problem was the fact that all of the agencies that were involved were completely tasked, but typically on a scene like that, the fire department steps up and takes incident command. In this case, the fire department had suffered just a couple hours earlier a pretty devastating loss, and their fire truck flipping over on the highway. So they were still trying to regroup for that, and, you know, probably were a little confused and just trying to run around and keep track of what they were doing, and kind of lost track of, hey, nobody's really in command of this thing. So there was, you know, that didn't happen, so then, instant command didn't grow like it should have in that scenario. And, you know, I think that's something that kind of came out of that meeting, and, you know, going forward, we'll probably fix. You know, the other thing is that there is a plan in place, and we've been meeting, all those groups have been meeting, just MoDOT for a couple of years now, to put a plan in place for an event similar to this on a highway. But this was such a catastrophic event that came, came on us so quickly, it was really hard to put that plan in place. The other thing that kind of came out was, you know, our, our plan was to use the service roads to move traffic around, and this didn't happen on the highway, but they were impassable as well, and they were also being used for emergency personnel and for emergency equipment to get to the scene of the problem. So, you know, there's not really, there's not really easy solution to that, but, you know, getting all those lines together, I think, in one room again, hopefully we come up with a solution.
Yep, it was pretty remarkable. And when they talked about today, you know, it wasn't just one big 18-wheeler, they were four of them, side by side, almost, you know, where you couldn't walk between them, and they had, they had the highway totally shut down. And just what you said, normally you could funnel them off onto the service roads, but when they're shut down, there's no place to go. And, but I thought it was a good, very productive meeting. I thought everybody realized their role, they all had good input into it, and hopefully something, something good will come out of that. Anyway, I want to share that with the public and the board. Next item on my agenda is item seven, Director of Operations and Finance Officer, Terry Thorne. Terry?
My first item for you tonight is a request for approval of the workers' comp renewal. We did receive the renewal for the period that starts April 1st of this year. The proposed annual premium is $74,269. This is an increase over the prior year's premium of $10,761, or 17 percent. There were several factors that played into the increase this year. One of the most significant being an increase in our experience mod from 1.07 to 1.16, as I understand it, due to a significant number of claims, with two of those being claims in excess of $80,000 each that occurred within the past three years, which is the period that's looked back. There will be a situation with two claims that the carrier will be going back to look at the insurance carrier of the individuals that caused those accidents, so there could be some recovery of funds that would help offset that at some point in the future. Also, there is a new addition of 3% for a second injury fund supplemental surcharge, and also a new administrative tax that is 1%. There were increases in the street and road rate categories, just in those particular categories for the individuals that fall within that, there were increases. So it is significant. We continue to train, we continue to focus on safety, and we'll continue doing that into the future to try to minimize as much as we can effects of this in future years.
I'm sorry, go ahead.
I was gonna make a motion to approve the invoice for $74,269. Second.
Motion by Alderman Ock, seconded by Alderman Flake to approve the invoice in the amount of $74,269. Before I ask for a vote on there, and Terry and I have had some conversations on this, I'm really concerned with the amount of workers' comp claims we have had, and I know it has to be on an everyday teaching and telling people we have to be safety conscious, and, I mean, when you have car accidents, and it's not your fault, it doesn't matter how much you preach and teach, some things are just beyond your control. But I do think we, we need to be, or all of our employees need to be aware of safety and what it's costing us to, I mean, when we get bumped on an experience rating, that's not good.
Absolutely.
And I think with that, too, I will add that four of the last five years have been unprofitable. And I've told Terry, this, this company, I will not vote tonight because I actually reinsure the company that insures our company, so I will abstain from the vote, but I think we have a substantial amount of improvement that we can do. Some of the, 7% of this rate increase is out of our control, it's based on the market, it's based on filing rates with the state, so we can't do anything about that. But the 8% we can do, and that is the experience mod, but unfortunately, we will be dealing with that for a couple more years because it takes three years to roll that experience off. So you can't expect that to be an overnight change, but it is something that, we talked last meeting about our health and wellness program, that's a very important piece of work comp. But we also discussed how we're gonna allocate pay increases possibly in the future, and part of my suggestion to Terry tonight is that we look into a cost allocation program by department and base pay raises along the lines of their workers' compensation performance based on that goal of actually identifying areas to get pay increases and add work comp to that. So with that being said, I will be abstaining tonight.
Very good. Any other comments on the workers' comp?
I just think safety classes, if we offer safety classes to our personnel, working personnel, is always a good thing, because, you know, people get lax and they kind of forget, you know, so home safety classes is important, and I think it's good for the employees as well, as for the entire city.
I agree.
We have a lot of free classes available to us, too.
We do classes once a month.
Roll call, please.
Alderman Cornell?
Yes.
Aldo Person Kestrelly?
Abstain.
Alderman Ock?
Yes.
Alderman Clark?
Yes.
Alderman Dryer?
Yes.
Motion carried five to one with, actually five zero with one abstention. Operational updates?
Don't really have anything. You stole my thunder on the meeting on Tuesday night.
Oh.
You, I didn't hear that.
You stole my thunder on the meeting on Tuesday night. Other than that, I don't have anything else.
I'm sorry.
That's okay.
I gotta shorten my list a little. Chief Howdyshell?
The only thing I have this evening is our monthly report from February. Numbers are down. I attribute that mostly to the weather.
Cold weather.
Yeah, cold weather, snowy weather. One thing I did want to make a note of on the detective report, that I was actually pretty proud of the way this all rolled out, but everybody is aware of the homicide investigation in Jonesburg back in February, and Sheriff Harrison actually called for our assistance as well as other agencies' assistance, but Detective Ferris got up and went out and spent the entire night helping, helping out where he could. And I think overall, everybody coming together to do one cause was huge kudos to law enforcement in the county, everybody coming together and really helping out, so just wanted to make a note of that.
Thank you, appreciate that. That's what it's all about. We are all in this together, so, thank you, Chief. Any questions for the chief? I'm ready for Brad Boosie Cruz's report. Maintenance and grounds director.
Good evening, Mayor and Board. Just had my monthly report, kind of getting ready for grass cutting and ball season, so got everything ready to go, and did some fertilizing and what have you, but been pretty uneventful so far.
So most of your work has been service work and maintenance work, getting ready for?
Got everything ready to go. We've been doing some, did a little fertilizing today on a few areas, and been doing some brush cutting and cemetery. We've been working on graves and what have you, so we're just kind of getting around.
I had a compliment today about I had a compliment today about how nice the park looks, so that was nice. I think everybody's excited to get out. I know I've been walking my little slow dog around the park, but it all looks really nice.
Yeah, Wayne's been kind of working on the west, on the south side over there, and some of that brush has kind of been, we're kind of cutting some of that back so it doesn't overhang that trail, so been doing a nice job, so.
Which park is that?
Binkley.
Binkley.
That's my park, that's where I hang out.
Chief, make note.
It's kind of in my backyard, so I have easy access to it. Jack, or anything else for you?
No, that's all I have for you.
Anything for Brad? All right, Jack, you're on.
First thing I have is the monthly report, if you have any questions.
Well, I keep looking for new home permits, and I never see anything in that block. What's the problem there?
I've not received any applications for them. Trust me, we'd get it processed and out the door quickly, in a parade down Main Street.
I would be leaving.
Seems like we're pretty consistent every month on the number of ordinance violations regarding vehicles. Is that, I mean, I'm looking at 32 in January, 35 in February, it's closed, and summons issued was 19 and jumped back up to 34. Are those basically, what's the nature of those?
Non-licensed vehicles.
So it's just mostly non-licensed?
Mm-hmm.
They seem to turn on me, how quick do we get resolution on those things generally?
Well, if they end up with a summons, that means they failed to respond. Normally, it's a case where someone's either working on a vehicle and needing to get a little more money to get it completed, or this time of year, you get a lot of, well, as soon as my tax comes, then I can pay all the registration fees. But the reasons vary, but that's what it's for, unlicensed vehicles.
Okay. Any questions on Jack's monthly report? How about the mud bog?
The next thing I have is, we received a special event permit application, SEP number five, for a proposed warrant and ban mud bog to be held at Duwan County Fairgrounds on May the 10th, 2014. Per section 405.185, applicants may apply for special event permit activities within the OPR district. On January 27th, 2014, Linda Scott, care of Warrington High School Band, submitted a special event permit application, SEP number five, for a mud bog and motocross to be held at Duwan County Fairgrounds on May the 10th, 2014. During the March 6th, 2014 Planning and Zoning Commission's meeting, the applicant requested removing the motocross section from her special event permit application approval request. The motion for approval passed nine to one with the following conditions. At the March 6th, 2014 Planning and Zoning Commission meeting, the conditions were applicant to provide detailed plans showing parking, traffic control plan details, including ingress, egress, and parking plans for participants in the mud bog, resting facilities and mud bog track details, including the general layout and our location of the tracks, audience areas, fencing, and our safety barriers, and dimensioning to the nearest foot relative to the spectator area and the completion area from the track. As of 2:00 PM Friday, March 14th, when I was putting your packet together, no additional information and our plans have been submitted or received from the applicant. And she's here tonight, so I don't know if she's got plans with her or not.
I'm sorry, do you want to come forward and... Do you have enough for all the board members?
No, I only have one cavity in my caviar in Oregon.
Okay.
Give it to Jack to see if it meets what he needs?
Pardon me?
Does Jack need it to see if it meets what he needs?
Have you seen this, Jack?
No, you haven't seen it.
My only question to you, have you done a mud bog before?
I've been involved with mud bogs for 24 years.
Okay.
This is my third one for the Warrington High School band.
Okay.
How old are you?
I'm Linda Scott, and I'm the president of the band Boosters at the Warrington High School.
That was my question, whether or not you had experience doing this, because, you know, you're dealing with motor vehicles and that could be a dangerous situation.
This is, I'm sorry, this is not the first one of these events that the band boosters has put on.
This is our third one for the High School band boosters.
Okay. Any other questions from the board?
Jack, has all the city requirements been met with this function?
As far as...
As far as all the safety concerns and everything connected with this situation?
Yeah, in 30 seconds, I can't answer that, sir.
Any reason why that paper, that information wasn't submitted a little bit sooner?
Honestly, it was a misunderstanding because last year and the year before, all they had to do is submit an aerial with this stuff written in there, and which is what I did turn in. I didn't know that he wanted me to actually draw it out with the feet and et cetera. So it is definitely too...
On, the first time this information was requested, she received a letter dated January 28th. The second time this information was requested, she received another letter dated February 25th. And the third time this information was requested was at the March 6th Planning and Zoning meeting.
I honestly thought he was just talking about the aerial, because they didn't have us do this before ever.
And in your packet, you have a copy of them letters, which I believe it's crystal clear, the information that was requested.
Has there been a change to the code? Are the requirements different than the previous years when she obtained this?
There is no section of code regarding mud bunks. Chris, would you want to...
Well, I think it's a special event permit, Jack.
The special event permit section has been revised because we removed the public hearing requirement and removed the 90 days to move it down to 10 days to try to help functions out at the fairgrounds, move through faster.
And did that change what she was required to submit?
No, the requirements have been the same from day one. It was just removing the public hearing, and previously, you had to submit 90 days prior to P and Z, where now it's 10 days prior to P and Z.
And I guess what I'm getting at is Ms. Scott is claiming that she submitted this year what she's had to submit the previous two years, and you're saying that that is not, she's always been needed to submit this?
The same information's been requested, yes, sir.
Okay.
I've never had to do the, draw out that map, I'm sorry.
Well, I mean, there's at least one meeting we tune now on the event. They postponed this issue until the next meeting so that he can review the documents and raise any questions he has with the applicant.
Yeah, we can do that. You get time, I mean, it's not till what, May?
As long as I have time for my, like, my T-shirt designer to have plenty of time, my vendors have plenty of time saying, hey, it's on, you know. My trophies are made, I mean, I have lots to still do.
Well, I mean, we have another meeting within two weeks, in the next two weeks.
So you're talking late?
The first Tuesday in April.
So that's given me...
Five weeks.
Five weeks to complete my T-shirts and my trophies and everything. It's a lot of work.
Cut and pulled.
Yeah, it's a lot of work.
You know, I was curious in reading through here when it came from the Planning and Zoning meeting, why Mr. Dickie, he wanted it to go before a special meeting instead of sending it to the board. Why was that and what was that referencing? Why were you doing that? What was your thought process?
The board has tasked us with looking at these, and I thought that even if we had to have a special meeting, I'd much rather see it come back to the planning and zoning and look it over than to take a few people's time.
Yeah, okay.
That's the only reason.
So it was the same issue of not having everything there as requested?
You got, you're looking at an aerial viewed out of about 1,000 feet with big black markers on it, I can't even read it.
Yeah, that's all I've ever done in the past. That sheet right there, it took me five hours to do. I can't draw, so trust me, I did a lot of racing to make it look as best as I could for this. I've never had to do that one.
And is the difficulty, because the mud bog is the mud bog, I mean, that's pretty there, but is the difference because we're adding motocross to it?
And there is no motocross.
Oh, you took the motocross off?
There is no motocross.
Okay.
I honestly was not the band member that was trying to add it, because I know nothing about it, which I told Planning and Zoning, honestly, I know nothing about it, and I'm not going to stay up here and say that I did. But one of the ladies that came with me was the one that knew more about it, you know, so, yeah, and we just kind of dropped it, because honestly, I really know nothing about it, and I want to stick to what I know is safe. I mean, they wear helmets, they're in their seat belts, there are five-point harnesses for the faster vehicles, fire suits, they all sign waivers. This is something I've been involved for, like I said, 24 years, and honestly, I've never seen nothing terrible. I mean, I've seen a couple roll, I'm not going to say I have it, but they walk away because of their safety harness and everything.
This isn't subject to an ordinance, right?
No, it's just board approval.
So we can make board approval subject to the approval of Jack reviewing the final documents?
Yeah, I mean, I think you guys have broad discretion under the zoning code if you want to give special permission, but I guess the question would be, how would you, if, say there was, my only issue would be, if there was an issue, Alderman Ock, how would you bring them back in front of you to say, how do you address this timeliness-wise or whatnot? That would be the only thing, is we don't really have a mechanism written in there for, you know, kind of drawing them back, saying, will we approve it, will we don't approve it? But yeah, I mean, you could, I guess, do some type of conditional approvals, meaning it, but I don't know how you would word that condition, that Jack would bring it back to me for you guys to reconsider or something like that.
Well, I'm not saying that we would prove conditional upon Jack reviewing the documentation and finding everything was adequate under the guidelines. That way, if it takes him two days to do that and everything's okay, then she can start her process and it can get resolved, but if there is an issue, then clearly he's going to have to bring it back to the next meeting.
I mean, Jack, do you see any issues, just to bring up before they make any motions on what you looked at?
No.
You don't see any issues on this? So would you be comfortable with that?
Should the motocross be crossed off?
Given me time to thoroughly review that?
Yes. So yeah, I think that would work all along.
You feel comfortable with that, Terry?
With giving me time to look at this?
Yes.
And then let you know within the next two days?
Yeah, I mean, yeah, I would be telling Terry it looks okay, and then she can notify the school and band.
What about this Alderman Ock, what do you think about delegating to Jack the authority to, voting and delegating to Jack the authority to issue the special event permit for this one time only? That way, if it meets his approval, then he can just go ahead and issue it.
Sounds like a better motion. I'll make that motion.
Would any of the board want to sit in on it with me, since at least then they'd be involved?
I didn't hear what he said.
Would any of the board members wish to sit in with me to review this, so at least the board was involved in the approvals?
I'm out of town today, so I couldn't do it.
I don't know.
Fred's retired, you can do it.
I don't know that it's necessarily the...
Don't be volunteering me down, everybody.
I understand the practicality of what you suggested, Mr. Gervell, but I think that that puts Jack in a bad position, in a position we've tried to get our staff away from, of putting them in the position to make the final decision as opposed to the board, and it is our final decision, so I don't think that's necessarily a position we should put Mr. Ham in.
I can sit in with him.
Pardon me?
I can sit in with Jack. Well, then the only alternative, if we don't want to go that direction, is to simply bring it up at the next meeting and the board can approve it.
I like your prior idea of approving it conditionally. Jack, how long do you think it'll take you to, will you have a decision on that, in a couple days?
Friday.
Hopefully, I would have time to look at, yes, sir.
Unless he gets a new house.
I could sure scan it and email it to every one of you, and then if you have any concerns, you can get back with me in a day or two.
What's your suggestion? What are you saying there?
I, like Gary's first idea of approving it conditionally upon Jack's approval of those conditions.
I did take the surveying wheel, I guess that's what you call it, and I walked out there and measured everything. So, you know, I mean, I got you pretty well from the edge of the pit to the edge of the bleachers, which is approximately 25 feet is what it's going to be. You know, equipment builds this, so maybe, you know, 26 feet, I don't know, you know, but it is going to be roughly in there, because we know right about where it goes, you know, all the time.
Is there going to be any of the concrete barriers out there? Because it looks like all you show is hog panel.
Yeah, I ran out of room, but there's permanent, they have like concrete that runs at the base of the hog panel and on the other side where the fence is along the other side of the stage.
None of that's shown on here.
The fence and everything is.
The fences, but none of the concrete barriers, which would be more of a safety feature than a...
Yeah, I did not, yeah, that's not on there. The concrete barriers are not on there at the bottom. They're concrete blocks along the bottom.
I'm going to make a motion that we table this till next meeting for consideration.
Second?
Motion on the floor by Alderman Ock that this gets tabled to our next meeting, seconded by Alderman Flake. Any other discussion on the item?
I have one question that's totally off of that whole map thing, but is it standard to have a high school event where we allow liquor?
We don't, we're not, we don't take the money for the liquor.
But we allow bring your own liquor in, I mean, there's a...
No, there is, no, you cannot bring your own liquor in. That is controlled by the fair board. That's how the fair board makes their money, besides what they charge us to rent the place. They take the money from the beer and from the concessions. We get the gates and then our T-shirt sales and our 50/50 rentals.
So the fair board has a liquor license?
Yes, we have nothing to do with alcohol.
But my thing was, it's a high school event.
I understand.
Where there's alcohol being served.
Right.
Which tends to lead to the problems. I mean, that's the only concern I saw in this thing, because I don't think there's a whole lot of discrepancy of where they can put the bog and where it's been in the past, but you don't have that concern?
No, we just, you sat at my table at the Daniel Boone Trivia Night fundraiser and we brought coors of beer.
But the children weren't there, but the kids weren't there.
I don't think that this is a high school event necessarily.
There'll be a lot of high school kids there.
I'm sure there will, but...
Well, yeah, they go to our fairs, too. I mean, I understand what you're saying, but it costs, it honestly costs $9,000 for the sheet music and the choreography for our students to participate.
No, I understand.
We're the only school that don't charge their students to be in our band. The average school charges anywhere from $75 to $800 per student to be in their band. So literally, when we're out there selling candy bars and little pizza and stuff like that or whatever...
And I understand that, Linda, I completely understand it, but that $9,000 for sheet paper does absolutely nothing to offset a child getting killed in a drunken accident. So that's why I...
Oh, the drivers are not allowed to drive, drink. If they are caught with liquor, you know what I'm saying? If they're caught with liquor, no, there is a policy on that. If they're caught with liquor, they are not allowed to participate in that run.
Okay, I think we're, I'm going to call for a vote. Thank you, Mrs. Scott.
There you go.
Roll call, please.
Alder Person Casterly?
Yes.
Alderman Ock?
Yes.
Alderman Clark?
Yes.
Alderman Dreyer?
Yes.
Alderman Flake?
Yes.
Alderman Cornell?
Yes.
Motion carried six zero. I'm on item 10C, amendment to section 405 dash, or point 050.
This is a proposed amendment to section 405.050, definitions and interpretation, and it is adding a definition, transitional living to the city's municipal code. And I'd already read you the description.
And that's an ordinance coming up tonight?
Yeah.
Yes, yes.
Okay.
I guess I'm a little confused as to what we're doing. I mean, there's organizations such as Warren County Handicap Services that has residence, residential group homes in the community. Does this fall under that? No, what's the distinction?
Well, state statute says you can't regulate group homes, exactly the point you're making, Alderman Ock, and what you're speaking to. There is no regulations a government entity can pass regarding group homes. This is not a group home. This is basically a situation where, you know, group homes related to handicap... This is basically a situation where, you know, group homes related to handicap and whatnot, and that's not what this is. This is related to, and I don't want to speak for you guys, but I met with you, and we had a really good meeting about it, but it's, and so if I get it inaccurate, just, you know, like, kind of, kids, not necessarily children, but kids that are finishing high school, transitioning into an adult life. Is that, would that be accurate?
Correct.
And not really related to disability or anything like that. It's, we're basically kids that come from foster homes, or, you know, difficult house situations, or difficult family situations, and they're just, so it's not a group home. It's a transitional living facility that has a group setting to it. And I know there's a distinction, but it's a very specific definition that you're talking about, Alderman Ock, in code, related to group homes for disabled or assisted living kind of things, situations.
So how is this distinctive from people who take in foster care children? I mean, we were in the foster care program for many years, we had up to kids, six kids, living in our house, and we didn't have a special permit or request permission from anybody, the city or anything. This is just what we did, working with the Division of Family Services in general court. How is this any different?
Well, I think, Alderman Ock, the point you made, I think, very succinctly earlier was, and running business, you know, I think implies a profitable business, and I don't know that's necessarily what you're doing, but they're essentially running a business to, in the same, they have a business called, what's your business called?
It's called Step Up Transitional Living Program.
Yeah, and it's a limited liability corporation, isn't it?
It's a, yes, it's a single-owner LLC.
Single-owner LLC, they're running a business, and like what you did, you are a foster care family that had people come to your family. I do think there is a distinction in that you have a business that is leasing the property, operating as a business, filing a tax return, that their job is to take kids in and put kids out. And I, we kind of, and this is not what you guys do, but, you know, I look at like a halfway house. Same kind of thing, non-for-profit, or, you know, or for some type of profit, or a treatment facility, residential treatment facility, where the intentions are very good to take people in and help them and move them forward in some direction. And this is just kind of another component that's a little bit different, you know, so kind of what you said, it's kind of a, and it's not, you have a contract with the state, but it's not the same thing as a foster facility.
Different because there's not actually an adult living unit in it.
Right.
So that's why originally I didn't get, worry about zoning or anything like that, because we were foster parents, but when we made the switch, the units that the kids actually live in, they're connected to our unit, but there's not a doorway that connects them, so they're considered a different apartment.
I mean, I would kind of almost compare it, try to categorize it, Alderman Ock, and this is not to be inaccurate, but I would almost say more of a shelter than kind of a foster facility, kind of a, you know, type of situation run by LLC business.
But, so in essence, what the city's doing is, we're saying, we're going to allow a certain type of business function to occur in a residential setting if we approve it.
Yes, as a conditional use.
So the question with Jack, I mean, I tried to look up in here what R3 is. Do we have this in our drop boxes? I was trying to find a zoning map and all that, I couldn't find it today.
The zoning map is not...
We should have a zoning map one online.
Okay. I was just kind of curious as to, define what an R3 is, the definition.
High-density residential.
High-density apartments, et cetera, et cetera. So if somebody wanted to do this in a, two homes that they own next to each other, this wouldn't be a permitted use, or a conditional or otherwise, it's just in the high-density areas, this is allowed.
The request, the next part is to add it to Appendix A, and it was strictly just in the R3 zoning district.
As a conditional.
As a conditional use. This first part is just accepting this definition.
If, then, under that example, since it's high-density, could someone then come in and do this thing on a much grander scale in a 20-unit apartment building?
Well, I think that, you know, could they, yes, as a conditional use. They would have to, that would be subject to the conditions that Planning, Zoning, and the board put on it. So, you know, the concept being, under our code, and how, you know, with the cycling and conditional use permit, as part of what we've done, is to look at it on a project-by-project basis to say, what is the density? What is the, is this over-dense? Is this too much, you know, population living here? Too much population in this situation? What is the density here? And then ultimately, you know, if somebody came and looked at it on a multi-level functionality apartment building, yeah, I mean, you know, they could apply for that under the codes.
And it's always been, my understanding is, if they apply for it under a conditional use, you can set conditions, but you cannot turn it down.
Oh, you can turn a conditional use down.
And face litigation.
Well, no, not necessarily litigation. I mean, you can't be arbitrary and capricious in your conditions. And of course, the court gives those definitions arbitrary and capricious as very vague and general conditions, and there's been cases that have defined that, to say that these are the things that, it's not a vested right, like a loud usage. It would be something that would be reasonable. Obviously, traffic, density, noise, traffic density, noise, I'm trying to think of the other things that the courts in both our planning and zoning commission has addressed. Encroachment into residential, single-family living areas, where they've looked at it and they've said, you know, when we've looked at these factors, and there's conditions where there's a denial, we said that is not being arbitrary and capricious.
Would this allow somebody who is, who already has a 10-unit apartment building existing to switch the use of it over to this? How could you deny that? Since the traffic's not going to increase, the population isn't going to increase, would we...
Well, I mean, number one, it would have to be R3. It would have to be an R3 zone, and I don't know that, I don't know if there is any 10-unit apartment complexes currently in R3. You know that, Jim?
Arlington.
Yeah, I think Arlington is probably the, that's the biggest single, I mean, that's the biggest single area that shows R3.
And, you know, like, when you're involved in a traffic study, and they look at it on a zoning basis, they don't base it on the current use, they base it on the proposed use. So they'll look at similar type of facilities, similar type of arrangements, because in their facility, you have multiple individuals living in a unit, where traditionally, you know, you may have four or five kids living in a unit, where a traditional family may have two, three cars. That may be a four or five car. So, you know, traffic studies, and I don't want to, you know, get into an argument with regards to our, a situation where I'm saying, this is where a traffic study would show, but generally speaking, when you look at zoning traffic studies, they're very specific to the use base, not to the site. You know, they'll look at the site as part of ingress and egress, but they'll look at the traffic studies related to the use, and will this use increase based on use over the current use? So, and density and issues with regards to those things are what they'll look at. And usually, it's a very fact-specific analysis the court looks at regarding conditions where the non-conditional use happens.
And then my other concern was actually one of them that you brought up. Other than the 20 years of age, which I think it would still leave a market, I don't see anything about this that would prevent a halfway house setting. Change this around from children coming from, change this around from children coming from foster homes to young adults that have, are coming out of prison, or out of incarceration.
But we also have, though, and correct me if I'm wrong, Jack, our code defines halfway houses, correct?
Must be address on this. Must be address on this request. It's over here on North Market, it's the, the duplex, right past Brad Perkins.
Oh, all right.
I think, are there...
I thought we put that...
Just for you.
We have a definition for halfway house. Well, I would say, in response to that, Alderman Cornell, if it is a halfway house coming out of prison, that's a state facility, or maybe a state facility, then we would have regulatory power over that one. That if the state willing to build that type of transitional living facility, and it's a state facility, we wouldn't have that with regards to that example. But we have boarding house, and I think the thing that we added to this particular time was excluding substance abuse counseling and treatment, obviously being a concern that, you know, a substance abuse and treatment type of halfway house, silver living facility, kind of the traditional idea and concept of it, under the counseling aspect of it, regarding that type of concept. So I don't know, with regards to a coming out of prison transitional living facility, if that's a state-sponsored facility, we wouldn't have regulatory authority necessarily for that.
I think I get my questions answered. I don't have any concerns on voting for this. I think it's a very critical service that's needed. We first got involved in foster care some 30-some years in this community, when a 17-year-old girl showed up on our doorstep who was being kicked out of the foster care system, and she had nowhere to go, and the worker said, "Go up there, they're nice people." And that's how kids are treated when they roll out of the system. So the state has made significant improvements in trying to help kids transition out of the foster care system, so they become members of society. So I think this is an important function, so I don't want the questions to be interpreted that I didn't like the program. I think the program's significant, I just wanted to get some understanding about what we were doing, because, like I said, we never went through this when we were involved with it, and I just want to see what the difference is.
And I will also agree with the importance and the need. I dealt with that throughout my career, have seen the need. My only concern is, is not approving it for your use, it is, what are we also allowing by changing this?
I mean, I think one of the things we can do, Alderman Cornell, if you want, is we can take back the planning and zoning, the concept of looking at that type of transitional housing, maybe coming up with a further definition, as looking at conjunction and differentiating that type of facility from this facility, to see if we can do that by code.
And we could do that separate from approving this?
Yeah. I mean, if somebody can come in and approve it, or apply for it in the meantime, but I think that's something we can look at.
And I also believe, you know, reading all the notes from our planning and zoning, the planning and zoning board has done a really good job of investigating and having very good conversation about this as well. So to your comment, Ron, earlier, I respect what the property and zoning folks have done, and that they all agreed with an a and no nays to this.
And I think, and I believe that they're going to have to come back once this is approved to...
Once this is approved, because right now they cannot, it don't exist.
With the site plan, so they're still going to have to come back.
How about item D? Want to address that, Jack? It's just where we...
Are we tabling this one to...
Well, I think we...
There's no action until we get to the bill.
Okay.
Yeah, nothing to do on.
Dr. Kinnon.
The next one is a proposed amendment to Appendix A, ADM 66, and it is to allow to add transitional living as a conditional use in the R3 zoning districts to Appendix A.
Any questions about that, or concerns?
We're even talking about it.
Kind of...
Hash that out.
Yeah, down the road. Anything else, Jack?
No, sir.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Appreciate your report.
You start calling him daddy.
Who? I'm not seeing that. Mr. Gaver, you're up.
Good evening, Mayor and Board.
I did, too.
First item to the monthly report. It's not real mobile.
Ready for Brad to start cutting? Done with ice and snow?
Don't even say that word, snow.
Last year, we still had one in March.
Any questions? Yes, we did. Around the 27th of March. Any questions for Guy on the, what he's completed so far?
I'm more excited about the next two up.
Next item is the approval for Roanoke Drive sidewalk project for $6,850.50.
And that was budgeted in?
Make a motion for the approval of proceed on project regarding Roanoke sidewalks, amount of $6,850.50.
Second.
Motion by Alderman Ock, second by Alderman Dreyer, to approve the Roanoke Drive sidewalk project in amount of $6,850.50. Any other questions or concerns? Roll call, please.
Alderman Clark?
Yes.
Alderman Dreyer?
Yes.
Alderman Flake?
Yes.
Alderman Cornell?
Yes.
Alderperson Casserly?
Yes.
Alderman Ock?
Yes.
Yes.
Alderman Dreyer?
Yes.
Alderman Cornell?
Yes.
Alderperson Casserly?
Yes.
Alderman Ock?
Yes.
Yes. Alderman Dreyer?
Yes.
Alderman Flake?
Yes.
Alderman Cornell?
Yes.
Alderperson Casserly?
Yes.
Alderman Ock?
Yes.
Alderman Clark?
Yes.
Alderman Dreyer?
Yes.
Alderman Flake?
Yes.
Alderperson Casserly?
Yes.
Alderman Ock?
Yes.
Alderman Clark?
Yes.
Yes.
Motion carried six zero.
Motion carried six zero. Next item I have is the Walton Street sidewalk for $16,499.
Where exactly, where exactly is this?
That's going up Walton Street, the same side as where the pool is located, replacing the sidewalk up through there.
This...
Which side of the street are you going on?
Be the far side.
South side?
Yeah.
But this is a very important one, and if we could get signs that say, "Walk here" after you get it done, that would be great. I make a motion that we approve the Walton Street sidewalk for a total project of $16,499, which is $1 within budget.
Second.
Motion by Alderman Casserly, second by Alderman Ock, for the approval of Walton Street sidewalk project in the amount of $16,499. Roll call, please.
Alderman Dreyer?
Yes.
Alderman Flake?
Yes.
Alderman Cornell?
Yes.
Alderperson Casserly?
Yes.
Alderman Ock?
Yes.
Alderman Clark?
Yes.
Alderman Dreyer?
Yes.
Alderman Flake?
Yes.
Alderperson Casserly?
Yes.
Alderman Ock?
Yes.
Yes. Alderman Clark?
Yes.
Alderman Dreyer?
Yes.
Alderman Flake?
Yes.
Alderman Cornell?
Yes.
Alderperson Casserly?
Yes.
Alderman Ock?
Yes.
Alderman Clark?
Yes.
Alderman Dreyer?
Yes.
Alderman Flake?
Yes.
Alderman Cornell?
Yes.
Alderperson Casserly?
Yes.
Alderman Ock?
Yes.
Alderman Clark?
Yes.
Alderman Dreyer?
Yes.
Motion carried six zero. 12B, Bill number 20-14.
Alderman Ock?
Yes.
Alderman Clark?
Yes.
Alderman Dryer?
Yes.
Motion carried six zero. 12B, bill number 20-14.
Call for the first reading of bill number 20-14.
Second.
Motion by Alderman Clark, second by Alderman Cornell for first reading of bill number 20-14.
In ordinance amending Appendix A of Chapter 405, zoning regulations of the Municipal Code of the City of Borton, Missouri regarding one residential B-group living in the R3 zoning district.
Call for second and final reading and passage of bill number 20-14.
Second.
Motion by Alderman Flake, second and by Alderman Dryer for second and final reading and passage of bill number 20-14.
In ordinance amending Appendix A of Chapter 405, zoning regulations of the Municipal Code of the City of Borton, Missouri regarding one residential B-group living in the R3 zoning district.
Roll call.
Alderman Cornell?
Yes.
Alderperson Kastlerly?
Yes.
Alderman Ock?
Yes.
Alderman Clark?
Yes.
Alderman Dryer?
Yes.
Alderman Flake?
Yes.
Motion carried six zero. Bill, first reading of bill number 21-14.
I think before we do first reading, we probably need to explain in public what we're doing. First two bills we approved related to the zoning requests on the group home setting. This is a bill that deals with flex time. And what the council is trying to do in a very structured way is to allow department heads and people who are in supervision positions to flex their work hours. For the example would be as if, if one of our employees worked all day Saturday because we had a problem, an emergency, they could flex their hours and then take Monday off and, as opposed to coming in Monday, putting all the extra hours in. And we looked at the basis of how many hours a salaried person should work and felt that, you know, they need to on a regular basis work more than 40. That was part of being a professional. But in some cases, it gets to the point where we need to be a little more flexible with how we handle time. It's not costing the city anything to do the flex policy, but it is allowing the supervision of the management to recognize efforts above and beyond by allowing employees to just shift their scheduling around. And this is pretty common in industry, and that's what this bill is about. And we had to do it through ordinance because we want it to be done in a very structured way so that it would be easy to follow, it's very accountable. And these are all recommendations after the committee met several times to look at this that we have approved. And it does have some modifications, so I'm not sure if we want to introduce it for first reading with.
It's in here.
It's all in there now?
All in there.
That was impressive.
I'm impressed.
That was impressive.
That's good.
So I'll, I'll call reading present. Yes. I will call for the first reading of bill number 21-14.
Need a second?
Second.
Motion made by Alderman Kastlerly, second by Alderman Cornell for first reading of bill number 21-14.
In ordinance amending Chapter 125 of the Municipal Code of the City of Borton, Missouri by the addition of a new subsection related to flex time.
Call for second final reading and passage of bill number 21-14.
Second.
Motion by Alderman Flake, second by Alderman Dryer for second and final reading and passage of bill number 21-14.
In ordinance amending Chapter 125 of the Municipal Code of the City of Borton, Missouri by the addition of a new subsection related to, related to flex time.
Roll call, please.
Alderperson Kastlerly?
Yes.
Alderman Ock?
Yes.
Alderman Clark?
No.
Alderman Dryer?
No.
Alderman Flake?
Yes.
Alderman Cornell?
Yes.
Motion carried four to two. Do you all want to make a statement as to your, any vote, vote?
We talked about it at, earlier in the meeting in our work session. I was agreeable up to 40 hours of annual, and then it was changed, it was changed up to 60, and I'm not comfortable with 60 annual hours.
Okay. Alderman Dryer?
Same thing.
Same, it's a dumper of ours. Okay. Bill number 22-14.
Somebody explain why this isn't a packet, or what it's doing.
This is a change in the statute with regards to the qualifications of aldermen in terms of office, that lowers the age of youth between 21 and 15.
Correct.
Yeah. That you can qualify to be mayor or board member.